Good evening, everyone. I'm Sherri Bell, official trustee and board secretary. To start, I'd like to welcome this beautiful audience, especially the students that are here and the musicians that are here tonight. I'd like to start by recognizing and acknowledging the song is a Swamal Nation whose traditional territory we live, we learn, and we do our work and we're meeting on this evening. I'm going to start by just doing a little introduction around the table so you can see who's here. And Norm, could we start with you and we'll move around here then.
Sure. My name's Norm Isaac. I am president of QP32 and I'm a panther for the school board.
Hey, everyone. Jeff Davis. I'm the director with International Education Board.
Hi, I'm Brittany. I'm the director of facilities.
I'm Julie Leonard. I'm the associate secretary at Tricia.
You bring everyone. Tom Arx, deputy superintendent.
Or one John Howell, associate superintendent.
Hi, everyone. Sarah Winkler, president of Victoria Principals' Vice Principals Association and the principal of our rebellion.
I'm Quaychelle Dr. Shelley Wilson. I'm the director for indigenous identification.
Tricia Thaxton, QP947, health and safety. And the DA.
I'm Nikki Roberts. I'm the vice president of the Preferring Principals' Association and the principal of middle school.
Good evening. Josh Parks, acting district principal of information technology for learning.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jennifer Person. I'm the acting director of information technology.
Hi, everybody. John McCarthy, director of instruction and learning and inclusion.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Diego Rose, director of instruction and inclusion.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to approval of the agenda. I'm going to change my A and P. It seems like we've got a lot of parents here. I think they're here mostly to ask the Miracul Springs performance. So we're going to switch the international presentation and the strength presentation. Oh, right. Thank you. So we'll switch those two. I've got a motion to appoint Julie Leonard as acting secretary treasurer in the absence of the secretary treasurer for the duration of this meeting December 18th, 2025, the regular board meeting. And that motion is carried. And the approval of the minutes is now carried. And we're moving on to district celebrations. And I'm not passing it to a principal, a vice principal, or a teacher. I'm passing this to Henry. Henry.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Klein, a grade five student at Miracul Elementary. On behalf of the students' families here tonight, I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to perform free. Arts is a big part of our school. We have two choir, senior choir for the grade three, fours, and five students from September until spring break, with Victoria Sings as the final concert in December. The choir often sings at the city hall or the legislature. They also regularly sing O Canada at PFC and Robicat Week. Junior Choir for grade one and two students run in April, May, and June. We also have dance club that has joined the second force of the performance tomorrow night. They will also be enenching the greater Victoria Performing Arts Festival in April. For visual arts, there is a coloring club so they can disordain like grade one as well as a protein medium club. There is a lot going on and there is more. We are lucky to have so many teachers and the DA's that run these clubs. I will let I can tell you her spring. This year, the Miracul Springs class has eighteen students. There are ten violinists, two violas, and five cellos. Everyone except for one person is brand new to their instrument. We meet once per week for forty-five minutes, except for October when the cellos have their own class for the first month. They have to hold their instrument totally different. So that worked out. We meet before school at eight AM, actually seven fifty, because we have to set up the chairs and stand and get tuned, which we're also learning because if we say we need a tuning and we don't, Miss Brigadier charges us a tune. Get it? Tune. Me? Anyway, it is so early in the morning and it is sometimes still dark outside, but it also shows how committed we are to learning our instruments. We have learned how to bow and flap these strings, how to music and where to put our fingers for different notes, and we are learning how to play together as a group. It is a lot of fun and we laugh a lot. We are already looking forward to the district strength final concert in May. Emily is going to talk about some thoughts on music. Last week, Miss Brigadier asked the class how we were feeling about things. We talked a bit about the things that were hard to learn. Here are some quotes of other things that students share. I like how anyone can join any club. I like being responsible for my own instrument and having the experience. It feels like you're in a tiny orchestra. Playing in a group is a magical and amazing field. I like how I play my music. My whole family does the tourism. That makes me feel really good. Miss Brigadier also shared a story with us. Two weeks ago, she was marking FSAs and a grade seven writing question was about skills and talents that we can share. One student loved that they adore music. Starting piano lessons in kindergarten, they chellor at grade five strings program, they clarinet in grade six band, and the bass guitar in the summer. They spoke about how music makes them happy, fun, and connected. They also said they are part main team. And while they do not strongly do their key traditions, they do know what main team culture and music is considered medicine for the heart. What a lovely way to describe how important music is. I will pass it over to Mace for the self-presentation. There is one more finals called Happy and Miracle Right Minute. We went to concert acting club. There are eighteen grade five students and we run it two times per week after school to learn the drama part of our whole school musical presentation. Everyone is learning a lot about how shows could together. Sound, lighting, staging, and blocking. Set some props, ask students to order. That stage crew is going to be very busy. We would like to invite you to come see a performance of it Saturday on Thursday, January twenty-second at one PM. So we have to save seats for the six PM show with families. There's everything from a football practice to chores to a slumber party, and of course, a piano lesson. And the kidneys are two door footments. Okay, back to strings. We are going to play two short songs in April. Oh, to join my Beethoven, the holiday favorite of us. We hope you enjoy them. Thank you again for listening this evening.
Well, thank you all so much. That really puts us in the spirit of the season. You did such a great job for, when you think about it, only needing forty-five minutes. A week very, very early, apparently, very early. You have to set up all the equipment and then get to the forty-five minutes of practice. I think everyone was incredible. That's when it comes September to November. Well done. Really, really well. You all should be so proud of yourselves and parents that came. Thank you for bringing the students. Mr. Murphy, Brigadier, thank you so much for joining in with the celebration tonight. And Karen, always amazing to see you perform with kids. It really is. So on that, thank you for coming. Parents that are here, if you'd like to leave now, or you can stay the rest of the meeting. Our next presentation, some of you might want to stay for because, again, students talking about their international exchange, which I'm sure some of the students in front of us from Miracul would be interesting when they get a little bit older. So feel free to stay or go and take a little break. So you have time to choose whatever you'd like to do. Thank you again, students.
Kathy Pulling. Can I start it?
Continue on. And I'm really looking forward to hearing from the students that were on cultural exchange in room in Japan. And to start us, I'm going to introduce and pass it along to Jeff Davis, who's the director of international. And over to you.
Thank you very much, Sherri Bell. I'm so happy to have a chance to talk about our longstanding exchange with the city of Moroka. Maybe before I start, I think it's really important we, students get a chance to introduce themselves and tell us which school they're coming from. They also told me before the session that in Japan, they became, they had so many speech opportunities that they're now pros.
No problem.
So do we want to start? Gabriel, do you want to start?
Okay. My name is Gabriel and I go to Open High and I'm in grade ten.
I'm Alex. I'm in grade eleven and I go to Red.
I'm Mikio. I'm in grade twelve.
I'm Brittany. I'm in the Royal School of Play and I'm in the.
I'm Cameron. I'm playing a lot of.
Thank you very much. And so this wonderful group of students, they were in Moroka, which is our twin city with the city of Victoria, for nine days in November. And look, it's not that long ago that you got over jet lag, right? So it's just about a week and a half since you came back. Right? So this exchange has been ongoing with the city of Moroka for forty years. And we've been having students come from the city of Moroka to our district, to our district schools for thirty-two years. And there have been, I believe, four hundred and thirty-eight students come from Moroka. And international education is about two-way exchange of students, teachers, ideas. And we haven't, we wanted to reinitiate students heading back to Moroka. So for the last two years, we've had groups of students going to Moroka and it's been wonderful. I don't want to speak for the students, so maybe, and we also do not going to use our wonderful chaperone. Do you want to go ahead?
Okay. My name's Renee and I was a chaperone for both times that we went to Moroka. And it was a fantastic experience both times around. So yeah, I can't say enough good things about it, but you're going to hear it from students. I'm ready.
Yes. I can start off with an initial question. Just, we're just going to do an informal Q and A. So tell me about your school experience. What did you notice were the same or it was different about your school experience? Because students were in home state and they were also attending local schools. Would you like to start?
Okay. Well, yes. Well, after school every day in Japan, they clean the school top to bottom. So that was really different. Everyone got a job and I was sweeping the floor. And I think, yeah, that's very different than what we do in Victoria. After school every day, we just leave.
Um, in our high school, each class was forty-five minutes instead of an hour and a half. And there were double the amount of classes. It's very different as well. It was like a lot stranger compared to in the school. Sorry? Uh, really good.
I, a different thing about a school was it's just better school spirit. Everybody was like actually better to each other. And also funny. Okay, it's true. Thank you.
Um, I thought that everyone was very welcoming about the dances and the parties.
One thing I love about basically our university setting is that it's a club.
Okay.
A sense of community there. Thank you.
Every student was in a club. Well, interesting. Any questions from the floor for this group of students?
I have a couple. I was in Japan twice in schools. And you know, first thing I thought of was the cleaning too, because that was something I had never expected, was that students didn't matter if they were elementary or high school students. The classroom got cleaned and everybody knew what their job was. It was fascinating. The other thing that struck me culturally, there were some differences. So I wonder whether it was in school or out of school that you saw some really unique cultural differences that, like the one I wanted to take home was slippers. Everybody wore slippers rather than their shoes. And I thought, what a beautiful way to enter a building, take your shoes off, and there were slippers there for you. Did you find any really interesting cultural experiences that you took away that you loved?
Well, while we were visiting the UofC University, we got to learn a traditional dance that they do in Moroka. And I think everyone has taken that back from Canada. And it was a very meaningful experience.
Beautiful, lovely. Anyone else want to share a cultural experience that they have?
Um, we also went to a shrine and there were a lot of um, different rules about entering and things like that.
And we have a, we have a student here from Miracul who at some point made a sign, maybe he would like to go on an exchange. What would you tell a younger student that you really got out of it, something that was really special? And why would, why would someone in elementary school be thinking about doing something like that you just did?
I mean, it was definitely really scary the months leading up to the trip, just anticipating what it was going to be like. But I made a bunch of friends and now we're all in touch and we're pretty close after being in the plane for ten hours together twice. Yeah. So it's a really meaningful experience. And if you ever want to try it, I really recommend it.
What else?
Try not to worry too much about what people are like. It was really nice. So, yeah.
Great. I saw somebody go to stand.
Just take this and just don't be afraid of making mistakes. Everyone's safe.
Yeah, that's nice. Don't be afraid to make mistakes. Yeah. It's a great lesson in anything that you do, right? Take a risk. And all of you did that. You took a risk and went to a place that, how many people have been to Japan before anyway? Okay, a couple of you. Great. Yeah. And which, how many of you would do an exchange again if you had the opportunity? Yeah, perfect. Excellent. Is there anything anyone else would like to share with us?
Well, I was getting feedback daily about the group's activities in Japan. And they represented the school district and their schools and their families extremely well. And you know, we hope that we can stay in touch. And you know, there's always opportunities for help of international students that are here in Victoria now. And I think you guys could definitely support in that way and create some more friendships. And yeah, we'll be in touch. And today, just before we came here, the district website, I'll send you the link. There's a nice article about your trip with a picture of you guys in front of a large mural, I believe, at Moroka City Hall. So you're famous in the school district world now. And but it was really, warms my heart to hear all the great things you did over there. There's a video as well, and the video that I'll make sure is available. Have you guys all watched the video?
Yes, it was played at our final ceremony for leaving.
Yeah, it's from the Moroka Friendship Association, connected to City Hall in Moroka. And they did a ten-minute video of each day's activities. So it's very nice.
Wonderful. Wow. What a great experience. And thank you, Renee, for, you've done this twice now as a chaperone, so.
And it's really great to see the students. Really, at first, like Gabriel was saying, or Mikio, they're kind of nervous at first or just the beginning. And then once they get there, it's so much easier. They make friends and they make friends for a lifetime. I mean, Mikio, these families that come visit and they stay connected. So I think it broadens, it connects us to another culture. And I think it's fantastic. I think it should be one thing.
The world needs a little bit more of that right now. Absolutely. To each other, absolutely. Yeah, appreciation of differences. That's wonderful. So thank you. Thank you. And thank you for your parents that brought you here. They did. So you're, I have to go.
As a parent of one of the children here, I have to say that the sense of maturity that I see in having that experience, the sense of cultural awareness, the opportunity to share in all the values that we as Canadians really treasure and being able to share that with their peers and the host families. I think it makes, does a good job to make us as Canadians and Victorians proud. And it's also a wonderful opportunity to see, hopefully, the future of our next generation as leaders in their own communities, hopefully, one day, taking those lessons with them as they move forward through life. So I think it's a wonderful program. And thank you for having that. If there's a possibility in all these difficult times economically to keep that going, it is priceless the lessons that kids are learning.
Absolutely. You know, later on in the agenda, we have a presentation about international education. And I think sometimes we focus on international students coming and attending our school, but it's much more than that. That's right. And I think you've demonstrated that tonight. So thank you. Thank you for your comments, Julie. All right. Thank you, students. Again, welcome to stay, but you don't have to. Okay, we're going to get back to the agenda. These six community presentations, there are none, there's no more. There's a letter attached in the package. And just. Thank you for attending. And. And. Uh, I have my report. It's a monthly report, but our last meeting was two weeks ago, so I don't have a watch report. Uh, except that I was, I attended the V C S T A Academy, uh, last Thursday, Friday and Saturday. And there was a speaker there, uh, that is a senator, uh, who was one of the most powerful speakers I've heard in a very long time. So if anyone had the opportunity to hear her speak, she came, uh, to Canada from, I believe it was Uganda as a two-year-old, um, and long story short, I think she's about fifty years old and she's now a senator. And the, the kind of struggles that her family went through when they came to Canada. Uh, and talk, she has spent a lot of time here talking and working to give youth a voice. Um, and really, really powerful, uh, speaker. And, um, it was, like I said, it was a, it was a great keynote. I, I attended lots of sessions, uh, one on governance, one on, I think it was an indigenous, um, initiative update and, uh, decision-making and heard two ministers, Mr. Wong, Minister Bear speak. Uh, and I continue to work with the V C S T A Policy Committee. We are almost at a point where there will be a provincial framework that we can, uh, share across the province. Um, with definitions of the policy, uh, bylaws and, and what procedures are and then looking at our own policies, which is what we have been doing for the past number of months. Um, so that will continue. I just wanna, this is our last, uh, meeting of my twenty-five and, uh, I know we still have a hundred and four weeks of school, but I wanna wish everyone a very safe and happy, uh, holiday season as we stay here or travel and see family and others, uh, so en- enjoy. Uh, we'll move to superintendent's report. Uh, we've got a monthly report. I, I, what are, there's, there's only one motion that's attached to school plans. But I will point out that the, I always enjoy the, uh, superintendent's monthly uh, report of what's happening in schools and, uh, all of the the positive things and also the things that our superintendent is grateful for. Um, and I'm grateful that she is where she is right now. Um, if you read the Times columnist, uh, Superintendent Wayton's daughter is representing Canada as a field hockey player at Santiago de Chile. And, um, I, I'm hoping that, uh, she's enjoying the time with her family and daughter as, as Madden competes for Canada. And I think I'll move from the monthly report into the school plans. Uh, and we've seen the elementary plans, how the middle school plans, and now we're about the secondary, about school plans and the goals associated with those plans. And I read through them and it, you know, it's, um, it's interesting. I found kind of a theme with the elementary ones and a theme with the middle school. There's also a pretty powerful theme, I think, secondary, um, focus areas. And it's all, it's all about, um, it's creating a, a culture of success. And when you think of, um, high school students and with their future, building that success, not just academically, personally, uh, is, is incredibly important. Um, and I just have a couple of questions. When I look, the first one, uh, that I was looking at was this one off and I, I really like their goal. Create meaningful learning opportunities with purpose and dignity for all of our learners. Uh, purpose and dignity are just such powerful words and I was trying to figure out what does staff look like. And so I'd like to see if either something superintendent Powell or Debbie Superintendent Tom, Art could elaborate a little bit on, what does that look like on the ground? Dignity and purpose.
I'm happy to share the whole examples. Um, this was our part of my portfolio. We'll get that posted with them. So, um, one example was found by is they created a little strategy simplification block. And that's a, a block where if a student wants to be successful in an academic class previously, uh, rather than having to redo the entire course, which they found when the masses might be very successful with the students. Uh, they have this, um, block where they put forth this on there is they were deficient then in order to get those credits. And those students are able to stay with the same mutual work peers and able to stay on track and also be successful. Um, so it has a specific purpose and then begins a lot of dignity in that. Another example for meaningful learning opportunities that was done is they created an outside of the timetable P H U class. Uh, for students who need a little more flexibility, or maybe the traditional P and G class wasn't being successfully. So they have a teacher assigned to them and even that came down as standard time period, but they track, for example, their activity outside of school. So a student has a really full timetable, it's not in trouble, they have all the classes in there. This allows some classes to be on there or assume that's the same, the traditional P class wasn't working for. They still do their health component and all the curriculum components, but just gives that positive movement to say, oh, I'm trying to get it. So that's.
Yeah, no, that's, I really like the, um, what did you call completion block?
Yeah, yeah.
That, I mean, that really makes a lot of sense. When you think of students, they're like, if you use something like math, I mean, that's a pretty concrete example. You may be strong in one area and not in another and to repeat the whole thing is, it's a lot and it's, it, it, it doesn't actually make sense. So I really called them for, for that approach. So, um, yeah, the, the, all of the goal, um, in, you know, the, the, and the culture, community, connection, resilience, you see all of those important words for high school students who are, like, what they go through as high school students to be successful now, but also in the future. So, um, really, really good. And I, I know that there's, um, a motion attached to this, I'm gonna read. The motion, I'll see if the other people have any questions or comments, but uh, official trustee of British Police School District, sixty-one approve the twenty-five, twenty-six secondary school plans presented. Any question? Okay, so that motion is carried. Um, and next we have, uh, biannual, uh, international education report. So I'm going back to you. Director Davis. You and you've got comment, right?
I do, yeah.
Uh, thank you, Doctor.
Well, thank you for having me. I must say it's wonderful to be back in person. This is my first in-person uh, um, report at a board meeting since, um, January two thousand and twenty.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, and the last time, actually, um, it's, it's kind of funny. The last time it was about, uh, outbound exchange and it was a group of students who've been, um, out to the Tokyo board. And we did a, a similar, um, um, description of the experience. So I'm, all, all that to say is I'm really happy to be back in person and being able to, um, uh, see everybody in the room and so thank you for the opportunity. Uh, so today I'll, I'll go through a fairly brief biannual report to give everybody, um, community and our district an update on international education in our district. Just clicking and it's, it's on. Sorry, I can't advance. I killed the batteries already. It was squeezing us so hard, so nervous.
Do you want to present us the data for you?
Uh, yeah, that is great. And I can just, I think I can remember the first couple of slides. The first slide that I.
Hold on, just sit that, see if we can advance from here. Can we look at that? Okay. And can we get rid of the wrong part? Yeah.
Is that okay?
That, that, yeah. Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Josh.
Is it advancing now?
Pointing at the right computer now, yeah.
Uh, it wouldn't be okay? I've, I've seen the PowerPoint. I'm just wondering if it's okay, uh, I ask a question, do we go through? Or do you wanna wait till the end or?
Um, as we go, it's, it's.
Okay, great.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, first slide is just about in enrollment. Just, it's an important topic in our district and and international student enrollment is always something that I provide updates on. So, uh, for this year, the twenty-five, twenty-six year, we have, um, we're projecting seven hundred and ninety students to be enrolled in the regular program. And students are still enrolling for the second semester, so that's why it's projected. Um, you can see top ten enrolling regions in no particular order. You can see them listed. Uh, Japan, China, Mexico, Germany, Italy, Brazil, Thailand, South Korea, Spain and Vietnam. But overall, there are thirty-two countries represented in our international program. Um, which is, is within a Canadian context, Canadian school districts is quite, um, uh, quite diverse, diverse. And we always focus on, on having students from many different countries as if there is uh, interest in coming to Victoria. So, um, just to give you an idea, uh, in, in alphabetical order, we have students from Austria, Belgium, Bolivia, Brazil, Chile, Colombia, Denmark, Ecuador, France, Germany, Hong Kong, um, India, Italy, Japan, Luxembourg, Mexico, Netherlands, Norway, People's Republic of China, Portugal, Russia, Slovakia, South Korea, Spain, Switzerland, Syria, uh, Taiwan, Thailand, Turkey, uh, the United States and Vietnam.
So that's, that's very, that, so seven hundred and ninety. Do you anticipate that going up a little bit? You said that they're still registering for second semester?
Uh, I think, uh, uh, it could be slightly over by five or ten students perhaps.
And was, what was your, was that close to your projected, uh, numbers that you thought you might have?
Yes, that, that, actually that, seven hundred and ninety is the, the projection and we might be, I said, five or ten over, but.
And so seven ninety, what is that? Like we had COVID and then we had to recover and is, is that number back to pre-COVID numbers in the district or?
Not quite. We had, uh, several years, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, where enrollment was between nine hundred and sixty to nine hundred and seventy-eight. Right? And that was, uh, but those were probably, those were our, our highest enrolling years. And then we had COVID and of course there was, um, there was a dip, a big dip in enrollment. The Bible, um, uh, forty percent dip. And then we started to come up and, but the last few years, there's been a reduction. Okay, uh, next slide please. So just a map where you can see, uh, graphically where all the students are coming from. And Q, next slide. So I, I mentioned it in the, the district celebration, just that international education is uh, defined as the two-way flow of students, educators and ideas between countries and regions. Uh, and, and I think that are always remembering that notion. Um, we have a lot of students that want to come to Victoria. And I know we have a lot of students here in our district that would like to, um, try, uh, international experience. Um, there's lots of reasons that is complex, but, um, it's something important that we're always focusing on in international education, um, in the, the international program. Uh, next slide please. Yep. Did you have a question?
I did, just, uh, yeah. Do you see? So I know when I was in school trip before and, and also the summer that comes and, um, one of the Canadian trends is that our students don't tend to travel abroad uh, for their education until they're finished there. And then they, they go, they don't go during as much, uh, both secondary and, uh, and, and secondary. So do you, do you see that changing or is that kind of stay consistent in, in your world for years?
Uh, I think there is a, I think if I'm comparing to when I started in two thousand and seven, there's certainly students are, um, more willing, or students from our district are more willing, um, that I think, uh, you know, you, as a good example, the group that was here today. Um, it's, the difficulty is, is just around organizing, um, staffing to help organize those kind of, kind of trips and, um, managing them. For example, we have a group of students in Tokyo right now. And this morning there was a big tsunami, right? So there's, you have, I would have to have people available to support parents and students, of course, through the experience. So, but I, but to get back to the zero and on your question, I do think that all, and I'll talk later about all the partnerships that we have as a district. All of those partnerships would love to have our students visiting. And that's one of the first questions I've seen when I, um, connect with schools and districts and jurisdictions is how can we get your students to come to our location, right? Um, cause they, they want the same thing that we've been experiencing in our district since nineteen ninety-two. Uh, my dream would be, you know, a place like, I, I'm, uh, of course have lots of, um, experience and connection in Japan, but I think we could get every student in our district to go to Japan. There still would be a ton of space, right? But, um, you know, that's, that's a very lofty dream, but, um, I think, um, to get back to the question, um, continuing to focus on that area and trying to find creative ways to staff it is, is a direction I look at. Next slide. Oh, no, oh yeah, and this is, uh, a bit more on philosophy and what you saw with the students tonight talking about the opportunities to develop. And it's, I, either students coming here or our students going out. The opportunity to develop these long-lasting friendships. And through friendship and studying alongside or, um, engaging in music or sport or something you love, um, you, you develop those lifelong connections. And yet the long, uh, the eventual, um, outcome is, uh, um, peace, harmonious relations between jurisdictions, countries, uh, and you, you're far less likely to go to war with someone who you've studied alongside, right? So, uh, next slide please. A bit on the history of international art district. I've never spoken on this before, but, uh, with a lot of the, um, uh, recent things that we've, we've been looking at, I wanted to take this opportunity to talk about international, international program has been around since nineteen ninety-two. Uh, so it started in our school district, uh, started, it was actually, uh, in a classroom at Oakley High School. Um, nineteen ninety-five, we were one of the founding members for our Provincial Association of International Educators called I P C. Um, and then in nineteen ninety-five, we also started to develop um, contacts with agencies and create agency agreements and school partnerships. So that was a, a good year. Nineteen ninety-five was also, uh, and I'll talk about it a little bit later, our first partnership with the Prep Tech. Um, and also the year I graduated. Uh, so two thousand and ten, we had a really big, uh, change where international moved to, from S J Willis to Uplands Campus and, and international, uh, supplied, uh, portion of the funding for that renovation. And that supported significant enrollment growth and new programs. And was a very good opportunity to provide better support services for international students while they, uh, were here, while they're here. And then since from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-five, I mentioned the kind of up and down. It's been steady development of programming. We had steady growth basically until COVID and then fell off and it started to come off in the last few years. basically until COVID and then fell off and it started to come off and in the last few years it, it, um, there was a bit of a reduction as well. So, um, that's the history in forty-five seconds. Next slide please. Talking again about the educational benefits, so we don't, I don't think I talk about this enough and I do meet with many students either informally or formally. This was a bit more formal because Kayla was, uh, a cultural assistant and in, in one of our summer programs, so we had the opportunity to talk with her about benefits that she viewed uh, with regards to international education and uh, Kayla was a, uh, Victoria High School student, graduated about seven years ago, went to UVic and then also did some co-op work in Japan. But during her time at, at Victoria High School, she became connected with the, the international students in the building. And she explained that she was able to gain an intercultural instinct, she was able to pick up different languages, develop new interests and, um, and her big takeaway was that she loved it because she could do all this in Victoria, she didn't have to jump on a plane, right? Um, and, and great intercultural learning opportunities, but when she was ready, she did jump on. So, um, I really, I really loved her, her quote, the way she described that. Uh, next slide please. And then talking about, of course, the benefit for our students who are coming from far away and I always, when I meet them in orientation, I always, um, um, make sure to say, you guys are so brave, coming a long way away from your families. Some students are coming for six months, some students for six years. Right? So there's a variation in the length that they're coming, this is Phi is, um, from Thailand, Lekanapong, I've practiced that many times, it's a, it's a, um, uh, Thai last names are, are tough, but that's not one of the tougher ones, but Phi is, um, uh, still in Victoria. She started at Uplands in two thousand and twelve, graduated Vic High two thousand and fifteen, UVic two thousand and nineteen. Uh, this is the, the pathway that, that we really like to see and, uh, now is doing very well at RBC in Victoria, has had several promotions. And last week, and she texted me, uh, it was, I'd already had this presentation put together, but she texted me and said, hey, I'm doing a soft opening on my new Thai restaurant in, uh, Fairfield. So Fairfield Community Plaza, it's called Thai Title, if anyone likes Thai food. So her and her partner have opened up, um, a Thai restaurant, so.
Uh, that's, that's a beautiful story.
Yeah.
I mean, you probably don't know a number, I don't really need a number. How can students generally, would you say, come as a high school student, stay and then go commosum for UVic?
I, I don't, um, yeah, each year, I, the way their enrollment has changed, it used to be more frequent.
Okay.
But post-COVID, students aren't coming for as long, they're coming for shorter duration. So, I mean, I, I would say every year, uh, and I do have that data somewhere, but every year it's like, oh, I think I, I do, I have some, um, top of my head, the UVic, um, uh, one of the UVic registrars provided me with some data that demonstrated that, um, international students from a few of our secondary schools.
Yeah.
Are their largest theater schools in Canada.
You're kidding.
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, wow.
Yes.
Well, thanks.
Um, and related to some of the previous things I spoke about, we did start this outbound program in a more formal way in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, um, doing it as a district, so you had students coming together from different schools and going to some of these locations where we were, we were offered, um, great opportunities at a very reasonable, uh, fee. In turn, like with the Morioke Exchange and the Tokyo Board of Education, the, 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 um, fees are kept as low as possible. And students are responsible for their flight tickets. But once they arrive, there's, there's not much extra that they need to pay. So, um, this has been annual with, with Tokyo and then Morioke, we're hoping to make it annual. Um, we have, our biggest year for outbound uh, would have been twenty twenty-four, where we had about thirty-eight students going to Tokyo, Morioke and a small, um, um, city in France. Um, so this one is on educational agents, the next part of the presentation is just a brief, I wanted to provide some information on all of, on the partnerships that we have, because it's one of those areas that might maybe a little bit, uh, misunderstood or not well, uh, not, we don't always spend a lot of time describing it, but we have, um, education or agency agreements uh, with agents in, and you can see thirty-nine countries. And we have seven hundred eighty-eight active agents, that means they have sent students. And these are small businesses that work in all of the regions that I, that I mentioned. Supporting students, um, throughout their, their study, uh, duration, helping with study permits, helping with communication between our office, parents, uh, and home state. So they, they're very critical for, uh, student experience and to make the work that we do manageable. Um, it's not always perfect, it can be quite messy when you're dealing in different time zones and trying to problem solve, uh, various aspects of a student's experience. But overall, they, they're a, a great help. Uh, that picture there, that big scary-looking building, that is the, uh, Tokyo Metropolitan Government Building in Shinjuku in Tokyo. And that is where the Tokyo Board of Education, um, resides. Right? So I've been there several times. These are our, our partnerships, so we have twenty-eight partnerships. And these partnerships are not all signed, like they're, they're, they've, some of them are thirty years ago. Some of them are two or three years ago, would be the newest. Takes a long time to initiate one of these. And then you have to spend a lot of time, uh, to, to make sure that, uh, you attend to each organization's needs. You can see we have a lot, but a few, um, relationships, MOUs, agreements in, in Japan, some at the board level, some at the individual school level. Uh, next slide please. Uh, you can see we have, uh, partners in Thailand, partners in China. Slotted these. Turkey, Brazil. Actually, that picture is the Stans Dual School in Sao Paulo, Brazil. And I visited there once, it's an amazing school and they come every year. Uh, they've been coming for twenty years. And they attend school in our middle schools in January and February, every year.
Right.
Yeah. And there are these, sorry.
How long a date or four?
Uh, about two months.
Two months, oh.
Yeah, January and February. Um, Argentina, Colombia, Mexico. Next slide please. Um, and this first one, the Technological de Monterrey. Uh, we actually, about a month ago, the representatives from the school were here and they did some school visits to their, the two schools where they had students. Um, Spectrum and Lambert. And we celebrated their thirtieth anniversary again, nineteen ninety-five. The first agreement we ever had is a district with a, with another school and if, you can see twelve hundred students have come to Victoria from that, uh, school, which is very well-known in Mexico. They used to all come from the Monterrey campus, but more recently, they're coming from all over the country. And it's usually about, um, um, twenty students per year, right? And they come at the beginning of September and then they also come at the beginning of, uh, February. And you can see Mexico, Belgium, and then I, one additional newer, I think that's the newest, uh, partnership from Japan. So.
Thanks.
I, did I talk too much?
No, no, you didn't, but I, I think I've asked the questions, um, throughout the presentation. But I just wanted to see, even though there's no ocean attached, uh, if there are people up here who have a question, it's like lots of.
Can I have a comment? Yeah, go ahead. I'm a, my, my, my son, my, at this time, he was part of one of the Tokyo trips. And since that's about to end in twenty twenty-two and since then has, um, worked with Uplands every summer as a cultural assistant and has made like friends throughout the world to stay connected with them. And it's been a life-changing experience for him, has changed his path on, you know, what he wants to do with work, um. And, uh, Renee, who was here earlier, has been a really big mentor for him, so he, uh, he messaged me to make, to make sure that I said hi.
Oh, I appreciate it.
But, uh, it's been a really, really, uh, important part of his life and a life-changing experience, so it's, it's a really valuable program. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. All right, we're going to move on to Secretary Treasurer's report, so to lead us over to you tonight, so it's the monthly financial report.
Thank you. That's not as exciting as international.
Oh, sure.
I did. Welcome through that, how do you follow with it? Um, so if you're featured in the nine of the pack, you'll find the monthly operating financial report for the month ended November thirtieth. In the prior year, this report was run until based before the month ended or if it didn't drop. Whereas the current year is run just after November, but overall the results are terrible. Um, and now if you go to pages forty-three to one-five of the pack, you'll find the budget claims report for the capital operating and special purpose funds. So in the operating fund, I just wanted to highlight, um, one item there, you'll see uh, revenue of thirty-two thousand and expenses of just over thirty-five thousand. And that is, um, funding for the French language assistance through the Odyssey program. So the salary and allowances are paid for by the federal government, but the district is responsible for paying any outstanding staff for benefits. So that's why the revenue setting issue there don't match. Um, in the special purpose fund, there was one adjustment to inclusion outreach literacy. Uh, we're recently notified that our funding has been reduced in the prior year, so we've reduced the revenue for that one. Um, and then lastly, the change in the capital fund is the reflection, it's interesting how early in November on local capital and ministry restricted capital. That, well, yeah.
No, I don't. You for a little more?
Oh, and, uh, yeah.
Oh, wait, there's, uh, I'll have it to work. Uh, actually, there, just there was, I had one question, I think. I was trying to find it. Here it is. The inclusion outreach, when you said the funding was reduced, when was it reduced?
Hopefully in the last four weeks. Uh, when we, uh, drafted the program.
Uh, yeah, October-ish.
So was this, was this after we, we power twenty-five, twenty-six budget we planned for, but then they say no, no.
Yeah.
And I'm going to, you know, try and go over to, to you, Sean, just to see how that affected and our program.
We, we were given sort of a short-term staffing extension, so being able to fill that kind of December, so we've been able to, that reality of sort of positions and. Yeah. The project shop always were there.
Right.
Yeah.
So it was a pretty good surprise.
Yeah.
I just agree. All right, thank you.
And that's a, it's a significant reduction.
Yeah. Those are never welcome.
Okay, uh, I think then we'll move to E two C, uh, over to review for the I orderly update of facilities. Um, I guess vandalism is continuing. Um, it hasn't increased, which is great, it hasn't decreased, so hopefully it will start to decrease. Uh, maintenance services, uh, working the project, reviewing the announced, actually painting the interior of my office and trying to do as many room flooring replacements at the same time. Usually do our flooring replacements in the summer, but somewhere in summer, we don't have enough. And so we're trying to get some down, so they're being very accommodating. Uh, they'll press about their classroom, that's very efficient, I think we might have missed some of it. However, we go to a sensible path to it, but we'll do that in March, March break. Um, we're starting to do some ongoing repairs and different ground services to, uh, to, uh, other states. Um, Fomerdale, we're working on just a new project there, just getting some fencing and some gates and, um, revising their ground steps, there's a little plan, plan over there. Um, South Park, the slate roof is complete for this year. I saw this guy giving this down and he will start again probably in March and that will be the last fish for that one. Um, DDC projects are almost complete, um, we just got, uh, which one is it? Um, Mount, uh, so I'm getting, there's one, sure, I've already done, this is right there. Uh, oh, thank you, we've got all the product, all the parts ordered now, it's being tendered and we'll, um, award that next week. Um, set funding, so, um, last year, the ministry awarded us two hundred and fifty thousand to go to Maryville Star Park. Fire canal offered, and we had to allocate, um, ministry's approval, we're a little bit over into most of it over actually in Uplands. Because they're found, they're in our state, so we're working on Uplands fire, um, and we're getting the grounds and Maryville. It's true, so that's ongoing, and we just got the occupancy permit for Vic High. And the tone building for Charlie, so that's great. Um, and it's quite a lot, we've got, uh, excavation that's, that's complete. And we're working on the forms for, right now, so they're all in various stages. Um, the studio, one big thing that we, we did a little bit different is, um, number of years we had cardboard boxes in classrooms for, but they were saying we moved to plastic bins and you put them on, and save some money. Uh, grounds, um, this is around, we had to talk about all the big grounds. Um, the ground budget is less than eighty-two thousand dollars a year and the five-hour class, uh, eight thousand, so five to five, there's a little over budget. But all the schools click that, I helped out, leave collection and, um, is any process, so is, uh, going now that we're traveling for innovation. We're getting ready for some, no, hopefully it doesn't get us, they're getting ready for some, yeah. No, no, please, uh, um, I'm, I'm, yeah, upgrades, um, by December, we will have rekeyed internally and externally all our high schools and middle schools, so that we can get a more secure in our in our district. Um, and this is a big number, um, there's three hundred and fifty-six, three hundred and fifty-six, of course. So one person has nine, go and change all those offs and a lot of the requests are multiple people, like, um, and I'm struggling with the five question, we can have five people on, so that's one has to remember we do that, so that's been fun. Um, OD, presenters are on undergoing, underway. Um, number of continuous optimization projects underway to save, um, some money in after this. Uh, that's, I tell you, uh, Cedar Hill Middle School, we got the final occupancy of total eight, great. And project is, um, within budget, they're currently working, so all for all of this, keep it on.
I saw that, I turned by the other day, yeah.
Wow, exciting. And all friends, where the project is, it's, it's, um, killed that.
Thank you. Well, thank you, I have a question, I'm gonna find, go back and find it. Um, oh, here it is. Transportation and grounds, twenty thousand people in the classroom, it's running successfully, so can you talk about, just for, just very quickly, when, when you talk about twenty-four classrooms, we're, we're mostly a non-vacant district. Can you, which ones are for, uh, distance, which ones are for inclusion, but give us the stats of what?
Yeah, so, and that between, um, budgets and budgets, um, best rates for the inclusion projects and projects. I can't speak to you. For the students, that's door deal. So those are decided by, um, Sean and David, I mean, go door-to-door with the students. And then we've got about five that are, um, related to the distance, so those are usually in the plans. There are usually several sign pop its inspection. Students and their son go to URA about, it's been a grand, or in, or two more years. So it's the fetus fails.
Okay, all right, good, thanks, that's. Okay, all right, good, thanks, that's, well. Thank you, um, and that's the quarterly report. I'm gonna move, there's some more questions, that's all. Uh, public disclosure of in-camera items, can be found in the, in the package under G one and G two. And there's nothing under H, so I am going to pass a motion to adjourn the meeting and ensure everyone, and.